It's really hard to see. I can't hear anything in there.
Have they everything muted?
Can you hear us now?
I can hear you now. Can you hear me?
I don't, I can't hear anything. Still can't hear anything.
Think it synced to Helen's headphones?
Maybe. Can you bring them down?
Yes.
I don't think so.
And then she turned it back on and she changed some settings.
I can't hear a thing.
I heard them talking.
Up there?
No, in your phone. You had, you said, "I can hear you. Can you hear me?"
I know. Okay. I still can't hear anything. God damn it.
Well, these are some kind of like safety and health issues, and so I really feel like...
Right across the street from Betty's.
Right across the street on the main highway.
Has a dump truck.
Uh, so like the front, um, which is the, there's two main highways. Like the one with the big Dodge or the one that has been having, uh...
Just north of the big dogs.
North of the big dog.
Yes.
That's how we do it in small red town Toledo. Are we good to go? Good?
We're good to go. We give out.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, number two, liquor license renewed, Adonis place. I entertain a motion for that. Please.
I would make a motion that we approve Adonis liquor license renewal. I'm assuming, uh, that is assuming, and I would imagine that there hasn't been no problems down there, but...
I think that's position two's job I was gonna ask that ago.
I'm sorry.
Okay, the motion has been made. Do I hear a second?
All seconds. I never frequent, but go ahead.
Okay, moved in second. Any more discussion on it? Nothing? Let's vote on, let's vote on it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance number seven seven two, interfund loan first reading. Ordinance number seven seven two, an ordinance for the city of Toledo, Washington, authorizing an interfund loan from the water slash sewer capital improvement fund to the police car reserve fund in the sum of thirty thousand dollars, providing for the terms of repayment and providing for the interest rate and authorizing the expenditures of said fund to pay for a two twenty twenty one Dodge Wrangler with police package. I entertain a motion to accept the ordinance, please.
I will make a motion to accept my ordinance.
Go ahead, second?
Second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion?
So, yeah, so we're, so we're loaning thirty thousand dollars if this needs the police fund not drive it. Is that, so they're like, you said like twenty thousand dollars in the fund for things that come up?
Yes.
The police car fund, not police car.
Our fund.
Yeah.
Now I'm confused. So... So the fund already has money in it before we loan it thirty, thirty thousand? Actually, it's fine. I, I was just, now, now I understand.
Make sure. I press like...
Okay?
Yeah.
Any more discussion? There was an emotion on the floor and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, number four, park kitchen structure observation findings, ecidos engineering. Mike, did you want to report on that? Okay, you got the, get the mic.
Okay, so as I stated, there was some dry rock.
For the new building cost, as I imagine that slab of concrete...
And I, I agree with Mike too. I don't really wanna dump a bunch of money into it, and then next year or the year after it falls down and we're out a whole bunch more money of restructuring and everything. Plus what we already put into.
The Lions Club have some, um, funds that they can support the, the new building to them. Not a hundred percent certain on that, like how much it would be, but they are very interested in, in helping with the structure.
Do you guys wanna meet with the Lions Club? Michelle, can we do that? Meet with Lions Club specialty? Or just a park, or just a park board?
I think it's more of a park board.
Okay.
To kinda get some things, uh, put together.
Okay.
They can work with the Lions Club, yes.
Okay.
And bring, uh, options to the council.
That sounds good to me. Is everybody okay with that? We didn't, do we need a motion for this?
No.
Okay. Moving on, number five, defense agreement request on four twenty Washington Street. Everybody saw in their packet what's happening there?
I watched that today. I guess, do we, do we talk about it first, do we do? So I, I watched that today, and if they're gonna put a fence up, I'm assuming they're gonna put, bring the utility shed inside of the fence?
Yes.
Cause it is, okay.
It's gonna go down.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Is there somebody here for the four twenty Washington Street that wants to talk about it?
There is not.
There is not? Okay. So, do we vote on these individually?
Yes, like two separate items.
Okay.
I make a motion that we accept the, uh, creation of a... What is that called now? The agreement?
Fence agreement.
Fence agreement.
Fence agreement for, uh, for our fine Washington.
Do I hear a second?
I second that.
It's been moved in second. Any more discussion on it? Let's vote on it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Fence agreement request on three oh five slash three twenty one Callet Street. You guys don't see that in your brochure? And we do have a person to speak. That'll be you.
We have both parties are here.
You just told me I had, I didn't have the one party here.
That was for...
This is two parcels, two separate properties.
Okay.
Both parties are here.
Okay. Okay. Go ahead.
And you just have to say your name and talk into the matter room. Sorry.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, uh, city council members and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I'm Ernest Badger and I represent Toledo Presbyterian Church here in Toledo tonight, and our church parsonage is located at three oh five Callet Street. Uh, we have built a six foot privacy fence around the property in accordance with a survey we had performed by a Goodman survey and in Winlock and this past December and the city of Toledo regulations. We're asking your permission to extend our new front and rear fence lines that runs basically east-west to the west approximately pre-booting the city-owned alley and but to, but not attached to, the existing north-south running fence previously constructed by our next-door neighbors at three twenty one Callet Street. Uh, that'd be Mr. and Mrs. Bone. The Bones are protesting my request, and so we're here tonight to seek resolution on this matter. As stated in my written request submitted to the city of Toledo office on January twenty sixth. I have received a recorded copy of our survey, uh, last Friday afternoon, and I passed it off to the city office this morning for your review. Uh, our survey, survey...
I hate that thing. Three houses that sit there, right? So they all face, let's say this is the street facing this way. That's Callet's, right?
They face Callet's.
Yep. So the alley we're talking about, base, I'm assuming is the one that runs behind the, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say the house on the corner that we're talking about, the mobile home that has, I'm gonna say that's the first house. So first, second, third house. The alley we're talking about start, comes behind the third house?
Not behind. It's between the first and the second.
Okay, so you, okay. Okay. You see what I'm...
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
There's, there's, there is one, if there's another house here and another house here, there is an entry that comes in here like this.
Yeah, this is the whole alley that runs behind them all and the fences between...
Here and here.
And the middle home.
Okay, so this, this is the alley though.
Uh, there's two alleys. There's a alley that runs...
Another one that goes right here.
There's alley that runs from, from third to fourth. And an alley that runs from Callet's. And an alley that runs from Callet's to Pine. So we're, yeah, Callet's to halfway. And right, so where this is Callet's.
Uh huh.
This is Callet's.
Uh huh.
And the alley that runs here.
So it's just this little piece of one right here. Cause then right here, don't we have a lot?
Uh, this is, yeah, that's, uh, this is, this is all parking to the, to the south is church parking.
Okay, that's, okay, thank you. So it runs into the parking lot, sort of, wood, if it.
Run into the parking.
Okay, that's what I just wanted.
It tees into the alley that runs east, west, behind those, those.
And then it would run into the parking lot. Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that I was thinking of the right spot.
And you're okay dividing.
I mean, I was looking, sorry, no, it's okay. I got it, I'm good.
And you're okay dividing the alley 93? Well, the alley still belongs to the city, of course. You've said, yeah. Yeah, as far as that's concerned. That's very nice. We, we don't want to disrupt the neighbor's fence in any way. Great. Uh, we don't even plan to attach to it, as we've said. Uh, we just want to put posts up next to it on the front and back and come to it. We volunteered to, uh, help, uh, pay our share of maintenance on that fence. That's done all over the place as far as, uh, privacy fences between properties and that's all we're asking to do. And so we can get your permission.
Okay.
We're gonna hear.
Yes, we're gonna hear the other, okay. Margot? Think you're out of the picture, Margot.
Uh, I really don't have anything to say except things all started. I didn't appreciate the way things were done, but in that time, my son has come down and pretty much mediated for me with some of the church members. And so I'm going to agree to share our fence with the church only because my son convinced me it was the easiest and best thing to do. So what the church member just said here is what my son and he have agreed to, and I have agreed to that, and I wrote a note and turned it in saying that I would go along with that, as long as they, um, what they say they will do. And, um, other than that, I'm just, it's been a very disappointing situation for me. It's been very mentally upsetting to me. But I'm, I'm done with it and I'm past that and, you know, they, they can have what it is that they're asking for.
Okay, so mine is, oh, okay. So my question is that in the letter from, um, Mrs. Boone, it states at the end that she, something about she needs also a fence agreement for the alleyway from before. Do we need to take care of that old business? Because it says, I, she would like an alleyway agreement for the fence that was built in the alley before, but she's never been presented, presented with one. Is that, do we not need to take care of that business?
That's what we're doing.
So that's, it's, it's, it's gonna take care of the whole, okay, just double checking that she's not asking for an additional something separate. I'm gonna clarify that before I.
Fence agreement and I won't be able to leave a fence up, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no more discussion? Let's vote on it, please. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I forgot to turn my mic on. Opposed? Motion carries. Anything?
Does mine not work?
Is my messing everything up? Awesome. I wonder if it's not, no, it is.
Don't mess with it. It's working.
Just checking.
Okay. All right. I don't have any other new business. Let's move on unfinished business. The park post. Michelle?
So I'll just add that, um, the park post apparently did move out. You know, you guys really struggled with this. Last company, you were giving him a notice to vacate within 14 days and he was supposed to pay. He vacated after eight days?
Yeah, it was.
Eight, nine days?
Next week. Twenty-seven.
Yeah, he did not pay anything. He left his trailer, as you were told. Um, left the mess all around the place. Uh, we did have some niceties and it did go down and clean up a lot of the glass and stuff that was down there. I know that there's still issues. There was an old, our first restroom we had down there, um, was his to use cause it was right by his trailer. My understanding that's completely destroyed too, and, um, our police department did go yellow tape it so that, um, somebody doesn't go inside. Uh, Public Works did remove the trailer just because it was a nuisance and it felt that, um, it was a nuisance that somebody might try to get in it and get hurt because there was no bore on it. So it is moved. We're preparing a letter to send to Rick because a lot of belongings were still left in the trailer. Um, we're still unsure, police department, right, of the ownership of the trailer. So the thought was maybe that the city, you know, Rick just give that trailer to the city, so we're gonna have to go through a process for that too. For lost title or something. So the keys have been returned, uh, the park keys that he had. And that's kind of where we're standing right now with all of it. So.
So, and your intention is to, if, if he does leave us the trailer to make it into something? Yeah, we'll utilize Supreme. So, just to clean things up, I'd like to make a motion that if Rick is amenable to it, that we exchange this debt that he had from staying there and from having to clean up the mess in exchange for the, for the trailer and call it good. Is that something that we would do?
Do I have a second?
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved in second on the motion. Any more discussion?
You have an attorney tonight, you can ask him.
Is that something we can do?
Uh, this person that, that tenant?
He was our park host. Under contract. The contractor did it.
He's, and he's left his trailer, this residence?
Yes.
Uh, he moved over to, yeah.
Do you know where he's at? Uh, I believe, I heard he was at Sis' place. So he abandoned the property. You have to give a notice. You're gonna store it for, I think it's 45 days, and after that, you're gonna dispose it in commercially reasonable manner. In the same letter, you can make that proposal to him and let him know what he owes and what the cost of cleanup was and all the other expense if he wants to do that. Yeah.
So, thank you.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor and seconded. Let's vote on it. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I don't see any unfinished business. Other business, public input? Any public input? Everybody's quiet as church bells. That's okay. That's okay.
It's been a rough day.
Okay, Michelle, the executive session, we need to close this meeting here and go on executive session.
Yes.
So. For the public can leave.
Yes.
All right, I'll need a motion to close our regular meeting.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn the meeting, uh, for February 7th. Is it Tuesday?
Well, we're not really adjourned because if you come back into session, you have to come back into session to close the meeting. So we're just going into executive session.
So that's what you need.
To clear the room, but you need to stay for, it's personal issues and for how long? And that way, if any of the public wants to come back, if there's any decisions to be made, they have the option to come back and then you'll close the meeting after that.
Okay then. Everybody heard that?
Mm-hmm.
How long are we gonna be?
Five minutes. Shouldn't take any longer than that.
Okay.
All right.
Public, I'll have to ask you all to, yeah, any extras to step outside.